Hey.
Don't worry.
Good evening. Just to let everybody know, we're live streaming. Oh, the ethnic community page.
You're live streaming that?
Yes.
How would somebody watch that?
Go to the ethnic community page on Facebook and just watch it, or if you're my friend, you can watch it on my page. And I also upload them to YouTube for people to watch later. And I could share it to, like, I put it in the ethnic community, Keep That Numb Rural page.
Well, I think you can watch it live.
Well, I'm saying live, that's why I'm sharing. I put it to the ethnic community to Keep That Numb Rural.
Oh, so you can get watch what's happening?
Yeah, you can.
Oh, okay, okay. I don't want this on Facebook. But I'll tell you, you'd have to admit it.
Yeah, or, like I said, I do it to YouTube later, too.
So, is that ethnic community page, is that Facebook, or is that...?
That's Facebook, yeah.
Yeah, he's the guy, they're in the black, he's the one that sent out the postcard. That's the husband of zoning commissioner.
If she went on to work?
Yeah, you can watch right now.
If she doesn't have to be a part of it?
No, she doesn't have to be my girl, she just has to be in that group. But she can just join us.
And it'll all manage.
It's running on daylight.
Does somebody have to take one of those?
I'm at that, I think it's automatic. If she doesn't keep that in the rule, I can just approve her real quick. Oh, boy, it looks like they've got my website. Looks like this is gonna be a fight. No, they've got pictures of my website, pictures of...
Doesn't matter.
Yeah. Well, they're gonna, they're gonna try to fight it as best they can. Like I said, this will go to the Court of Education, probably the Supreme Court, too.
You Mark Evans?
Yes.
Hey, who's going, Steve Cuckler?
Which, who?
Huh?
Who are you with? Who are you with?
Taps, the Tanyson Hollister.
Oh, okay. The township's attorney?
Nick.
Yeah, they're gonna, they're gonna be fighting, they've got exhibits. Yeah, I don't know, well, they're gonna throw everything they can, I mean, they're throwing... Well, like I said, now it's in our attorney's hands.
It's getting out of election.
Well, it'll, yeah, our attorney will handle anything. The election attorney.
They try to take some of the...
Did you know a township they tried to, and they're still in the courts?
That's, you're just trying to say something's their...
They are, and Polte, they don't care about what they do. This, this just shows even more.
That's a trend now.
Yeah. It's like this... I don't think everybody's here, I have a new room to hire.
All right.
I think it's on the table on her desk if you need it.
Oh, well, let's keep that in the rule.
Good evening. Welcome to the Board of Trustees, special meeting for June 8th, 2021, 6:00 PM. I call this meeting order. Please stand for the invitation, Mr. Johnson.
Hi, Mr. Johnson. Thank you for this day, for the assistance here. I pray for those who are out in their countries, who just have a moral for those people who have human lives for us and our freedoms that we have, enjoy here. I pray for those who are missing their loved ones, that they're out doing that right now, protecting us. And I pray for those who are first responders, or those other people that would be in front of us from having harmed or done us. And then, anyway, please join me in a pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, without doubt, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hold over, please.
Mr. Johnson here.
Mr. Ford.
Here.
Mr. Carter.
Here.
The motion to the adopted chairman is presented.
What's the move?
Second.
Mr. Ford moves, Mr. Johnson's second discussion.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Mr. Carter.
Yes. Other comments? Okay. I want to skip over to do business for a minute. I was approached by a gentleman that was looking for part-time work. I had him go over and talk to Bubba. There he is. Bubba needs some help over at the garage, so I'll let you go ahead and explain.
Okay. I interviewed him, and I interviewed him well, and I think that would be a good fit for some kind of help or put a conference meeting here. But we're asking we will help solve a good business.
And his name is Wes Lorenz, he's Ethan's brother. Wes is going into service. He is enlisted, and he has enlisted in Marines. And this will be, right now, he's set to be deployed, or I'm sorry, to go into basic training, in July. I was saying you could use him to help out at the garage for the next few weeks, and so I asked him to interview him. And what do you think the fair wage?
Thirteen fifty, I mean, it's up to you guys, I mean, between there and the program.
Any questions?
He's part-time?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, he worked the same schedule every week, or you're just gonna rotate as needed, depending on weather and things like that? Okay.
He says he'll be real flexible with him, that when, you know, that the guys won't be off, I can just, he's gonna fill in and go about.
Okay. But he's not driving equipment or anything like that? Okay.
All right, then, does he have a CEO?
He's eighteen years old.
Oh, he's eighteen years old, okay.
He can still be a CEO, but he can't last long.
Is he planning to do that while he's here?
No.
Okay. And you're saying the middle of July sometime?
That's, that's only from the end of July.
I'll make a motion to hire Wes Lorenz, part-time. W will be his immediate supervisor. What wage? What do you think is fair? I was thinking of the ones about thirteen fifty.
No. What was that? Do you mean you found that date?
Probably, yeah.
Sure.
I'll make, in my motion, I made it hire Wes Lorenz, part-time, thirteen fifty an hour, effective immediately.
Is there any follow-up to that? Those are later?
Not necessarily.
I think we could throw, like, maybe some until the middle of September, something like that. We said we have, this way to find an end to that.
Can I get a second first, then we'll get into discussion?
Oh, I'll second, okay. Yeah, we'll make, like, into the, make it something towards the end of the year, in the season or something like that, so that it's a, it's a point of the period. They understand that, you know, it's going in, they did change their employment date sometimes, so it would be more clear. What wage in the season do you think you need?
I don't know whether we even know that or not. It would only be used, but as needed, not, they're not gonna be set so many hours a week, it's just as needed.
Does it matter for this wage, or we have to, like, terminate their employment at some point?
We would, after he is, you know, once, once we don't have, once we don't need his services anymore and/or he is, then if we want him to boot camp, we can then make a motion to terminate at some point. Because we'll have to get his file back and things of that nature, and keys.
All right, so we'll make a request. Okay, that's fine.
Okay. Any questions?
Broke off.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Mr. Carter.
Yes. If you would, Bubba, get ahold of him and have him go get his truck test tomorrow, if you can. And it's up to you now.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm gonna go to old business. Resolution to certify the referendum petition. We've been asked, like Mr. Hart, he wanted to present, have a presentation to the board, and so Mr. Hart... Is that not that, is that...?
This one?
Yes.
Yeah, I have three charges.
Oh, okay.
Tess, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, trustees. Tom Hart, two marital employees.
He stays in and out.
Oh, I can hear it.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Sorry, Mr. Hart, go ahead.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this time, I want to yield my three minutes of time to Mr. Stephen Cuckler.
Okay. Mr. Cuckler?
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I also wanted to speak tonight, and I'd rather I yield my three minutes, took care of you, Mr. Cuckler, as well.
State your name and address, please.
My apologies, Matt Howling in, 475 Metro Place, up on Ohio.
Thank you. Mr. Hegy.
Charles Hegy, 14097. I yield my three minutes, Mr. Cuckler.
Okay. You have twelve minutes, Mr. Cuckler, who rocks?
Mr. Chairman, can you hear me all right? Trustees, everybody?
Can you hear Matt there?
You all hearing?
Yeah.
All right. Well, I appreciate your time. I'm here to present, I'm here on behalf of Steve Cuckler, 94 North St. Dusky Street, Delaware, Ohio. Partner at the law firm Taps, Tanyson Hollister. Along with me is Joe Pickens, also a partner at Taps, and back in the day, great quarterback, look him up someday. But we, we're here on behalf of Mr. Charles Hegy and Polte Holmes, and we come to object to the petition filed, and I want to talk about those reasons. And I sent an email earlier today with a letter. Mr. Pickens, if you don't, just to make sure the trustees have a basis that it lays out.
The one that you emailed to the township trustees this afternoon?
Correct.
I have it.
Okay.
You have it, Mr. Ford?
I read it, yes.
Okay, fantastic.
Would you like a hard copy, sir?
If you have a hard copy, that would be great.
Absolutely, we do. We've got a million hard copies.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, as you know, right in the township, this is a great community, right? Believe it or not, the townships of NVA of Ohio, you got more jobs than residents, you got strong commercial tax base, that tax base supports schools, roads, you got low taxes, it's a great place to live, to work. And everyone believes in the, right, this is America, right, you want to write the petition government, pass around petitions, get signatures, that's fine. But at the same time, it must be done properly, and it's gotta be done in accordance with the law. And at the same time, the reason it must be done in accordance with the law is because it affects the private property rights of individuals. And so what we have here today, the petition that was filed by Mr. Evans, is flawed, it's misleading, it was circulated with false information, and just typical big city slick tactics that were used to get this, to get this done. Now, as trustees, right, I know referendum's kind of a new thing here in Lincoln County and in this township, but as trustees, you all do have the authority to not certify, if you deem, based on the facts that we are prepared to present to you, based on the facts that it is improper, that the title of the petition, language itself, the manner by which it was done, does not substantially comply, strict compliance is what the law requires. High revised code, look it up, 519.12H, right, it requires a strict compliance with the law. Again, the reason that does, again, they can't just, you know, sign anything and turn it in, it's because you're dealing with private property rights, so it has to be done in strict compliance with the law. Now, I want to go over a few of those things, some of those points, right, and again, a lot of this is detailed in the letter. And in the first part of the letter, it details your authority, as trustees, again, you're creatures of statute, creatures of the revised code. The revised code says that you have the authority, if you so be it, based on the face of this petition, to not certify it, and therefore not send it to the Board of Elections. You have that authority. This petition is invalid for multiple reasons. Number one, the petition fails to satisfy the summary requirements of revised code 519.212H. It's insufficient for the following reason: It fails to accurately describe the property. The summary references in the resolution, Exhibit A and B, were not included in each part petition when they were circulated. The summary neither describes the existing PRCD overlay zoning, nor accurately describes the PMUD. And in fact, you'll see with information that we will provide you today, when the circulators were discussing the PMUD, they mischaracterized what a PMUD is. And lastly, the zoning text, again, the summary of the petition, the zoning text, it included a zoning text. Now, again, it wasn't, we have evidence that it was not circulated with that as zoning text or exhibit. But the zoning text references a development plan. There was no development plan. There's no development plan included in any of the stuff that was submitted to you guys. Number two, so number one, the summary requirement was not satisfied, number one. Number two, there are discrepancies with the signatures obtained on the petition. Again, we've just been investigating this thing for about a week. Investigation's still gonna go on. We got folks everywhere looking into this and talking to people. The information in the signature section, there's portions that appear to be pre-filled out. One of the petition circulators isn't even from Lincoln County. One of the signers of the petition is not even an ethnic township resident. Again, this is at least one, and we can spend a lot more time combing and finding more of these things. Lastly, there was significant misconduct and misinformation provided by collectors during the signature collection process. And I want to go through some of those things with you tonight, if I may. Uh, excuse me, if I may, Chairman. First thing I'd like to provide to you is the, is all the Facebook posts. We'll make this Exhibit One. Hundreds, thousands of Facebook posts, millions and millions of acres of pine trees, they print all these out, combed with misinformation, mischaracterization. And in fact, and this will bring me to the next point. And in fact, if you look at one of the first posts by one of the main circulators, Mr. Evans, with us here, on 91620, right, he posted one of the original, the original application of the picture, right, and it goes through about why this is bad and horrible and goes through all these things. Again, mischaracterizations, et cetera, false information. The second thing I'd like to show you is their website. Make that Exhibit Two. That's a snapshot of KeepThatNumbRural.com. That website, as of this morning, still has the original plan back from last August. That original plan is not what was adopted, was not what you all passed. And in fact, the original plan was completely different, and we're gonna go through those differences real quick if we got information to go through, and I've got about six minutes. During the circulation process, during all the great speeches on Facebook and in the paper, everybody was told, "Go to this website for more information about this referendum, more information about this zoning." Okay, so let's go to the website. The website is false. The website is wrong. The very picture you can see there is from the old plan. Let's get the, let me find it, where it's in, together. This is the plan you all adopted. Again, that's part of the zoning text, and that was omitted, not included, it's part of the zoning text, but in all the paperwork that was provided to you by Mr. Evans, he failed to include that map. Yeah, that'll be Exhibit Three. The next thing I'd like you to look at, before we do that, I want to, let's grab the affidavit real quick.
Hey.
So, based on, so again, false information on social media, false information on the website that everybody was pointed to for more information, "Hey, learn what this is about, go to this website." The website is false. Based on our initial investigation, we have one person, and we've got more that we're talking to, they're coming out of the, coming out of the woodwork column. Already, as of, already, we've got an affidavit from a gentleman who signed the petition, who relied on the website, relied on the Facebook post, was told that this would include a skyscraper, an Empire State Building, this might include warehouses. No documentation was provided during this circulation, no maps, no zoning text, no Exhibit A, no Exhibit B. Hey, stop urban zoning. He relied on that, signed it. Once he learned the facts, he felt hoodwinked, fooled, tricked. Once he learned the facts about this, again, he relied on all this false information that was done during the circulation, and this false information, you see, was not clarified on the petition itself. It led to the confusion. The next thing we want to provide you, we'll make this, this will be... Correct. The next thing we'd like to show you is Exhibit Five. Exhibit Five shows you the changes, thank you. Exhibit Five is a comparison. Again, Mr. Evans and the promoters of this referendum wanted you, wanted the average person to think, "Hey, it's this plan from August of 2020." Heck, a lot's changed. I mean, Trump was president in 2020, right? He's not now, and guess what? The plan changed, too. In fact, let me just, original plan, August, 365 lots, now it's 276, almost 100 difference. Density, less. Setbacks, more. Access, limited to emergency vehicles only, more green space. I could go on and on. The differences are stark. When they were circulating this petition, there's a reason he did not include this map, supposedly. Now, again, we have evidence that this was not included, nothing was included in the petitions, but they did not include this map because it is a contrast to the very same, they say is fact. The changes that were made are significant. What was adopted by this body last month, or in April, is significantly different than what was proposed last summer. And as a result, people were misled. The petition is misleading, as to think that it was the old plan, when in reality, there's a new plan. But there's no reference to the new plan or the improvements. The last thing I'd like to enter as an exhibit is, this should be Six, is just another quick summary. Again, we're gonna spend a lot of time, we could go through this thing forever and find more and worse stuff, but just in a week, what we've been able to find, this is a summary of a lot of the misleading comments that were made during this process. Thank you. I know I don't have, I'm limited here on just a couple more minutes, Mr. Chairman, and I... What's that?
Yeah, one minute.
One minute, all right. Thank you very much, appreciate it. Oh, in closing, oh, we're good, we're good. We're good, I got this. In conclusion, you all have the authority. And I can come up and answer any questions that come up, no problem. You all have the authority to not certify this to the Board of Elections. A petition, a referendum petition, requires strict compliance with the law. It cannot be misleading, it cannot be ambiguous. It cannot be ambiguous. It must be very succinct, exactly what was passed. So that way, the average voter, the average signer of this petition knows exactly what it is they're signing. The evidence is clear. The average person does not know what they signed. The petition language is flawed. And I would say that you all have the authority to not certify it. If you do, do intend to actually certify, if that's true for others, I would ask that you submit all this information to the Board of Elections with the objections noted.
Okay. Do you have a minute to speak?
Uh, no, we're probably just gonna give you more time, maybe more time to, to yield your trade. But yeah, follow your little head.
I appreciate it, thank you. Anyone else want to speak in regards to the referendum petition? Yes, ma'am. Come up to the microphone. Come up to the microphone. State your name for the record, please.
Pauline Murray. We've been through this before with Frontier Ranch, and you're well aware of it. And we heard all this stuff before. He's not, his man's done nothing wrong. This needs to go to the Board of Elections. They'll determine if the signatures are good or not, that's what they do. I walked all over this township with Frontier Ranch and didn't carry a map around with me of what was gonna be built on Frontier Ranch. I'm not ever aware that that was a requirement. And you guys lost it to Ohio Supreme Court. So my suggestion would be, let this go to the Board of Elections and let them make the determination if something was done wrong. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hart.
If I could take one of the yields of one of these gentlemen, I'd like to speak.
Mr. Snyder, do you yield him?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Mr. Hart.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The facts of some other case, some other situation don't matter here. What matters is, the right of referendum is an ancient, respected part of our legal system. It goes back to Old England and Old New England. It's a form of pure democracy, it's a powerful right. It's powerful. Property rights are at stake. The, the ability to question a legislative body's decision is, is in the law. But the standards, as Mr. Cuckler has said, are high. You gotta follow the law strictly. You can't lie, misrepresent it. You can't twist facts, you can't make up your own facts to get a referendum petition on the ballot. It's governed by the law. Not what somebody makes up in their basement, not what somebody hopes and wishes. It's the rule of law. That's what separates us from lots of other forms of government. Mr. Cuckler's documented, the flaws in this petition. People can get up and say whatever they want. The rule of law is what should govern the situation. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
I'd like to speak.
Mr. Evans.
Mark Evans, 91 Old North, Old North Church Road. Mr. Hart just talked about democracy, petitions and all that. What we have here is attorneys for the developer, one landlord, trying to prevent everyone in the township having a vote over the zoning change. That's just wrong. We, we've had nonstop threats with this development, and now it's just more legal threats. If they're interested in democracy, let it go to the ballot, let the people speak. You fight that, you're fighting the people, you're fighting democracy. You want rule over the people, that's wrong. The people have spoken with this petition, put it on the ballot, let everybody decide. You're deviating from the comprehensive plan. So if people like that, they'll vote one way, if they don't, they'll vote another. But let people speak. If you don't certify this and, and put it to the Board of Elections, where they'll go through the signatures, they'll go through the compliance. And I'm sure they'll go to the Supreme Court. And we're ready to defend it and defend the residents of this township against a developer and one landlord, trying to force their views on the township. And that's wrong. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Yes, sir. State your view.
Craig Zachar, 79 Trail East. Mr. Evans does not represent all the residents of Edna Township. And for myself and a bunch of other people I've been talking to, we welcome Pulte and this housing development, since these houses are gonna be in the 300,000s. The last thing we want is apartments or duplexes coming in. And
Hold on. Ma'am?
So when he says
You know what, you had your three minutes. Give them the same respect. I'm sorry, Mr. Evans.
No, that's okay. So when he says he represents the residents of Edna, that's not true. It's a small group. And I just want to thank you all for what you did.
Thank you, Mr. Zachar. Anyone else? Do you have any response?
Yeah, in closing, I would just say, a lot of talk about democracy today, but democracy requires following the law. Now, sometimes following the law's not sexy, right? You've got political motivations or what have you. But the reality is, if you don't follow the law, we have chaos. We have the right to petition interacting with private property rights here. Therefore, the petition must be done perfectly and strict compliance with the law. And if it's not done in strict compliance, it's not done properly. Again, this is not a GoFundMe page or somechange.org where you're trying to change the school colors. This is a big deal. And therefore, it must be done properly. Mr. Evans, the petitions, the referendum that he submitted was not done properly. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cuckler.
Can I respond with a couple of seconds?
No, I'm not going back and forth. Can I get your He's allowed to respond to anything else. You heard what he said, he didn't add anything to it. He's responding only to what was said
I was gonna respond to what was said after me, too.
Go ahead. I would like to get your name.
Sure, please. Joe Pickens, Test and Tidious in Hollister, South.
Joe Pickens, okay, thank you, I appreciate it, thank you, Mr. Pickens. I'll allow you one minute to respond, Mr. Evans.
Thank you. This is just what was said after, after my
I appreciate you bringing that up, thank you.
Uh, this is a response to Zach Hunter's comments, the husband of the zoning commission member.
The who?
No, 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 no. All right, I'm sorry, not Craig Zachar, I'm sorry. Craig Zachar, uh, the husband of the zoning commission member, who is responsible for the postcard that was mailed out. I did not claim to represent all, everybody in Edna. What I'm saying is, let the people of Edna decide this. We have, had 604 people sign our petition, we could've got a lot more. That's a large portion of, of the voters in Edna. Again, let the voters decide. Thank you.
I was going to correct even closer. Because I had it written down here as Craig Zachar, not Zach Hunter.
It's, it was
I just heard that and I
It was a Facebook confusion, sorry.
I'm sorry, I learned that, my fault. Anyone else? You have any questions? Um, one question I have is, I guess we are, counting a look at this. Look at this. I You have any questions?
What's our timeframe for 14 days?
From the day that we received it, we receive it on June 1st.
Okay, so we have until the 15th.
I would say comfortably the 14th.
Oh, my comment would be is, I would like for Matt Stewart to be able to review what was submitted tonight. Matt Stewart at the prosecutor's office, and for us to have an opportunity to speak with him about this.
The 14th is, um, next Monday. Are you gonna be out of town? I'm gonna take a five-minute recess, I'm gonna go to prosecutor and discuss with them. And then, uh, take a five-minute recess, we'll reconvene at 6:40.
They said the last one was 14 days, so when we handle two, we're keeping to that. Yeah, let, let's stop the people from and if they want to talk about misstatements, I've got Pulte's at their open house, blatantly have truths. And I hope this stuff is going through, in the, and opens up, because there were a few sent over the video of Haiti with that racist notice. If they're gonna do accusations on it, then maybe we could bring that in, and force them to. Did you see that? And I know exactly what he's talking about with the skyscrapers and all these plants are turning everything, they can, they can swat them down. Well, I know what they're trying, they're, they're throwing everything against the wall. That, that's why I originally wanted to be an attorney, but I didn't, because I didn't want to work with attorneys.
Yes, so we're all the way back on the right for oppression. This one, Pickens' realtor, not everybody. Trying to, as I understand, my truck. Now, somebody behind them, two people saw the realtor go to Haiti showing Haiti babies on the road. And then, rich at the shoulder. Cause that was my But maximum, people just say, I've got another apartment. Does it, why? Apartments? Everything, all apart. Um, we had a road extension, newer neighborhood, supposedly, and drug trucks burned at the youth Palmer. That's what they're They started trying, like, second to the last Pulte. Like, heck, they're showing up, they're getting their little forces, and they're little news. And what's funny is they're saying misinformation, uh, from Haiti's, you know, theirs, fully closed, allies. I mean, it's just nothing but performance. She keeps saying she's not, nothing to do with Haiti, well, guess what? She lives on his property right now. She's registered, has no connection to Haiti whatsoever. Chelsea, Chelsea, Lee Nolan, a person that is defending Haiti. Um, I have no connection, I have no, why are we doing this, well, it's just this and that. And, you know, she's the
What, we, you don't have, you don't have to carry it around?
Our, our attorneys
What I, what they said is that's the developments of public information, that the community can get all the actual things of the development through the township. So if anybody had any questions, that's what we have to do.
Actually, we call him, just, uh
Hey, Corey, it's Mark Evans here, we've got a trust agreement. They're supposed to start a crime, she's a murderer, and she's a victim, and she's a.
Yeah. Yeah.
No, it's still, it's loud. These chairs are better. I was gonna like tax it, man.
Okay, we're back in session. We're back in session at 6:42. Um, my brief conversation with, uh, legal counsel. The statute requires that the council trustees certify the petitions as long as they are legal on their face. Uh, we are not triers of fact, and we are not able and not prepared for conclusions of the law. All we are is basically a mechanism to get it from the residents of the township to the Board of Elections. That's our function. With that, also, we discussed the 14 days. There is a possibility that, since they did, um, present the petitions on May 25th, today is the 14th day. Uh, without getting into the law, by us waiting, um, it could end up putting the township in a lawsuit. So with that said, um, I'm going to move Resolution 2106-0801, a resolution certifying the petition for a township zoning referendum to the Leaking County Board of Elections that's presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Discussion. Mr. Cutler, I will forward all your exhibits under separate cover, uh, Township Letterhead, to the Board of Elections as you've requested.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Did I hit everything that you wanted to know?
Yeah.
Rokeau.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Mr. Carr?
Yes.
Can you restate that resolution number, Mr. Chairman? Thank you.
Announcement, trustee comments, Mr. Johnson, do you have any?
No.
Mr. Ford?
No.
No need for an executive?
Correct. Correct.
Is that correct, I guess? I entertain your motion to adjourn.
So move.
Mr. Johnson moves, is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Ford, second discussion. Rokeau.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Mr. Carr?
Yes, 646.
Good luck, tell Cory Colombo I said hey.
We'll do.
He and I went to law school together.
Oh, did you?
He's more expensive than me, man, jeez.
What was your name again, do you have a car?
I don't have any, my. No, leave that there for my last one, Cutler, just tell him Cutler said hey.
Cutler, alright, we'll do.
Yeah, he's a good guy.
I remember your name, though. I, I remember your face and your name.
Chairman, thank you for your time today, appreciate it, Mr. Evans.
Alright, just for everybody still watching, uh, so it's going to go to the Board of Elections. Uh, as you could see, they're going to challenge it, uh, probably very vigorously. Uh, so we're going to have to defend it there and, uh, likely up to the Supreme Court. Uh, so hopefully, uh, we will prevail, uh, give everybody in the township a right to decide uh, on this rezoning, not just, uh, three people. So they're gonna, they're gonna try as hard as possible to keep this off the ballot uh, and keep you from, uh, making a vote. So, uh, keep up the fight and, uh, you know, keep up the support, we're going to need it, but thanks.
Mr. Evans, do you want to copy this?
Yes, please.
Mr. Evans, Mr. Cutler?
Thank you.